It's six o'clock, I think we'll get started now. Council meeting of September first, 2020 is called to order. Stand for the pledge allegiance and we'll have council member Joe Schmidt lead us again.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Joe.
Slow down a little bit.
Hey Donna.
Got it.
Yes?
Will you do the roll call, please?
I will do roll call. Councilmember Feas.
Here.
Councilmember Innesco.
Here.
Councilmember Bode.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
All right, let's go on. Does council have any late changes to the agenda tonight?
I have one late change, Mr. Mayor. We do have, as we talked about in briefings, we're finally able to allow the public to attend our Zoom meetings and Donna is working on that. But we did want to add a public comment period as item number C or item letter C, excuse me, on your agenda for this evening and all other items would be bumped down one letter. So your business agenda or presentation would be letter D, business agenda would be a letter E and so on.
All right. Donna, should I read this part in the red?
Yes, please do.
All right, thank you. Members of the public can make public comments on both the business agenda and the action agenda. Option number one, join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link that is displayed on the city's webpage. The link is listed on the agendas and minutes page under the tab that says more. Option number two is to email city manager Jeff Knighton. And option number three is to call Jeff's office phone. Both the email addresses are displayed on the screen of the Mason Web TV streaming video. Okay. So now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as public?
I'm moving. Second.
Second, thank you Eric.
Who did, who did the first, who made the motion, Mayor?
Joe.
Joe made the motion and Eric second. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, here we, now we'll start with our public comment. Period. And I think we have Matthew Woodruff, is that correct?
That's correct. So Matthew, give me just one moment here to set the time. And then I will call on you. Okay, Matthew, you can unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yeah, hello, my name is Matthew Woodruff. I live in the city of Shelton over on Turner and 12th Street. And every day I have to go to work, like most of us, and do my job. And on the way there, I see a playground there, I think it's Neyland Park. And I noticed that the playground is closed every day and, which doesn't allow much opportunity for my kids to run around and swing on swings and go down slides. And I'm pretty concerned about that because I just don't see the numbers and COVID deaths or cases or anything for any kind of age group that would put my children in danger or my neighbors' children in danger. You know, I see more of a problem with my children not being able to release their energy and get outside and, and run and laugh and play. They're more cooped up inside our property or house as opposed to being able to get outside and be around other people. And that's pretty concerning to me. I've been able to call every council member's phone and I've left messages with all about the, about this. And been able to raise my concerns and I've only been able to talk to four people out of the seven that I called. And that's concerning to me as well. One even has a voicemail that's too full to even leave a voicemail with. And that's during a time where there hasn't been any public comment available at these meetings. And that's concerning to me. I was told by some of them that the council's worried about having to tell kids to get off the park and having to basically police kids. Well, I understand that that's not what you want to do. I don't see how the council or the city has any right to tell children what to do. They just have the right to tell the parents, this is the law and it's the parents' responsibility. And if we're concerned about telling kids what to do, maybe we should be a little bit more concerned about the drugs and the illegal activity that happens in those parks and not worrying about whether there's too many kids wanting to go down a slide. Just within the last recent memory, we had a stabbing over at Loop Field in a park. I think we should be more concerned about those things than we are about whether or not children can swing or if they might get too close to each other. If it's an issue of staffing, I don't see how that could be an issue. It's the parents' responsibilities to look after the children, not the cities. I would appreciate if you, the council, would look into opening up the playground so that my kids and my neighbors' children can all play and have fun. We can do so safely. We know how to wash our hands. We know how to socially distance. And at the end of the day, when you look at the numbers, children just are not affected. They're not at risk. This is not a problem for the vast majority of kids. And we should have the right to choose for us, for our own children, if it's an acceptable risk or not.
Excuse me, Matthew, that's three minutes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that is all we have for public comment at this time. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
I'm muted. Kevin, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that, guys. Did you read my lips? Now we have a video presentation on the lean process. The lean process team consisted of staff members from Community Development, Public Works and Central Mason Fire. Donna and Tim have the details. Is Tim with us?
He's with us.
Okay.
Here we go.
This is the development review team for the city of Shelton. They, they, they review all commercial permits and every permit in the city of Shelton. And back in February of 2020, the state auditor's office came and trained us on lean performances, which is a holistic approach for reducing the process and provide a value to our customers that are coming across our front desk. Behind us, that's the process for a commercial development application. This, this team nitpicked essentially each and every process of a commercial development permit, outlined it on the board behind you, behind us, and then established where, where processes could be eliminated, where they're duplicated, how we can make it more efficient for everybody involved. And there's proposals that came out of this that are making our processes better for the customer coming across the counter.
Hi, I'm Jason. I'm part of the development review team. One of the things we found after the process, something I think we all knew, but as we discussed it further, it became more important than a lot of the pieces you're going to hear about further, and that's the value of a pre-submission conference. And current, for a commercial project, a pre-submission conference is not required. Well, what is that, you know? What's pre-submission conference? Well, it's a situation where somebody applies with fairly minimal plans. They'll typically have a site plan, basic floor plans that show a general concept and a type of use. They can then sit down with city staff, all the people that are going to be reviewing a permit, and get input at an early stage before they've invested in engineering, traffic studies, stormwater, utility plans, those sorts of things. And what we have found over the years, and I've been doing this for 15 years for the city of Shelton, what we have found are projects that go through the pre-submission conference come in at a much higher quality and are much closer to something we can approve at a, at a first review. Not always, but sometimes they are. And it saves not only less time, but save the applicant time. And you're talking development, not only from a city standpoint, from a developer standpoint, time is money. So one of the changes we're recommending, understand, time is money. So one of the changes we're recommending is that pre-submission conferences be required for a commercial building permit application of a certain scale.
Hi, my name's Nicole and we made a permit process checklist so we can bring in more accurate and more complete submissions. So we made a checklist to make sure applications are more complete. Anybody can be at the front counter and do the checklist with the customer so we can have our permits go out quicker in the future. I'm Keith Ritz, I'm the deputy fire marshal, submitted for the fire protection applications, go through, updating with the new lists of what we need as well as combining them all into one list in the application to make it easier for the applicant so they don't have to figure out which applications we need.
Evening, councilmembers, Ken Gill and City Engineer. There's three big things that we did with this thing process that helps out our commercial building process. One was one single person, person that it all goes to. Everything that comes in goes to one person and then one person can filter it back out again to the correct people to get a review. Second thing was all electronics submittals. So instead of having the paper on the wall come in, you've got PDFs coming in that anybody can look at on the computer and then redlining it, markups, go out, we have electronics submittals also. So the third big thing is updating our traffic impact fees. We're in the process of doing that. So instead of having uses that you don't use anymore, that people are building, you've got new uses so that you can give them the right and accurate feeling.
Hi, I'm Sean Charles-Grimm, I'm the building official. And in the lean process, we found that it would better serve the customer to provide downtime between eight and 10 o'clock in the morning on Mondays and Wednesdays for anybody that wants to come in and look at their plans.
So councilmembers, we produced that video for you. We wanted to get, wanted to get those folks in front of you for quite a while. The process was completed in February. Everybody that participated worked really hard on it. And because of COVID and because we can't meet in person, we weren't able to do that, but we got a video with outstanding production value, as I'm sure you all noticed, to present to you what those, what those updates are and what they are all focused on is to make our building permit process and our commercial building process easier for applicants to come in and to, to talk with us and to get those approvals quicker so that we can get them to work. We focused on the commercial permit process because that's one of the more complex ones. And because a lot of the lessons learned from that lean process can filter down to other types of projects. They don't, it won't just apply to commercial, commercial permits. We won't have to go through another lean process for residential, for instance. A lot of the lessons learned apply to other projects, which is why we picked that one. Very, very proud of all the work that everybody did to pull that together and as you can see by all those sticky notes and a week's worth of discussion and all the notes on the wall, they put a lot of effort into it and they should be applauded for that.
Thank you, people. Moving on. The only item on the business agenda tonight is a resolution for the FCS group rate study. Amendment number three, Public Works Administrative Manager Brooke Kiltz will give us more information.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. All right, so this is the third contract amendment with the rates that is for the FCS group. The work has been completed so far for the second amendment that took place and they've been working hard to do that. During that time, we have found that an audit is needed for our current stormwater accounts. We need to have them measure the previous service area, match it up to the stormwater accounts in our billing system and identify any holes that we have, if there's any developed properties that aren't linked to a current account system. We need to find that out. And all of this stuff will help us build a foundation and a database for the monitoring activities and the inventory and inspection programs that are required for our new NPBS permit, the phase two permit. And all of this also is going to be covered by the grant that we received and the council accepted, I believe, is last October. Let's see here. So the new contract amendment is going to be for a total of, pardon me, I left my paper. We're adding $44,860 to this contract amendment for them to complete that whole audit. And so the new total contract amount is 79,920. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kiltz?
Third time's a charm?
What's that?
That's the third time's a charm?
Well, they've, they've completed all the activities that we have asked them to so far, but this task that we've asked them to complete as far as the audit is, is something that we attempted to do in-house, but because there are so many accounts and there's not enough staff members to complete it, it would take for us to complete it ourselves. And because this is something that is covered under the grant that we received back in October for the $95,000, that's something we felt it was a good use of those funds to assist us with this, especially since it is something that's going to benefit us during this phase two permit, all the stuff that we have to implement with that.
Thanks.
All right, any more questions while we can pause for public comment? Okay. All right, that's 30 seconds. So staff recommending that we concur to move this item back to the act agenda. Number 15, any objections? All right. Let's move on. Move on to the action agenda now. The first item on the action agenda is the updating of two city policies. Administrative Services Director Michelle Thuderman is here to share with us. Is she?
She was not able to make it this after, this evening, Mr. Mayor. She had an appointment that she couldn't miss, so I'll go ahead and take over for her. We have two new policies for the city that are in direct response to COVID-19. The first of those is limited duration and it relates to the FF-CRA, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which will be administered through the end of the year. That policy, and I can pull it up and just kind of read a little bit about that. Have it here. Is for two categories of lead. The first expands the existing FMLA coverage. And the second is for response to childcare. And this policy would be in effect through December 31st of this year. The second policy that we have relates to telecommuting. And the telecommunications policy is changing, this would be a permanent change, but it's basically with your department director or your direct supervisor's approval. You could work from home on the city-based laptop, which is, the organization is moving toward the cloud. That's, would make it more viable. It's an employee attraction tool going forward. And it also would allow people to have work-life balances that are performing work for the city. Be happy to answer any questions about either of these policies. And we can go move forward from there. This is just one part of the policy update, the more comprehensive policy update you'll be seeing later this year, but we wanted to get these implemented because they're in response to COVID and the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act.
Jeff, I did just notice one small grammatical piece, which is on page 26 of the packet. I think that can probably be resolved with the Scrivener's Correction, but the bullets three, four and five don't relate to the stem sentence. It's just a consistency thing. I have no issue with the content itself, but just want to make sure that as we're getting that reported, it's done appropriately.
Is that the tele, sorry, I was looking for that.
It's under eligibility. It says employees are eligible if they have job duties, if they can't be available, if they, there is minimal. If they, the employee's job.
Okay, so the change would not affect the overall to the policy. So we can make that, make that grammatical change. That's, we'll get that fixed.
Thank you.
Jeff, on the, on the daycare side of it, if, if schools were closed, well, schools are closed. So are we going to allow this until school reopens?
We have. We started allowing telecommuting, telecommu- easy for me to say, telecommuting during, right when COVID-19 started to really affect the state in mid-March of this year. We brought everybody back, but then about two weeks ago, we offered the ability for people to work from home if they so chose. And with the department director's approval, very much in line with the policy that you see before you tonight. So that can happen today. But with the comprehensive policy update, making this permanent, should, fingers crossed, this never happens again. Should anything like this ever happen again, this is not something that we would have to focus and spend time on since we'd already considered implementation of this policy now.
I was referring to the leave of it. So could somebody actually take leave today until COVID is over and partially be paid for that and?
They could under FMLA and that's the, the expanded FMLA protections that were included in the FF-RCA.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll pause now for a public comment.
That's 30 seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a motion? No, do we have a motion?
I move to approve this city policy number 200-1860 in support of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and city policy number 200-1870 in support of telecommuting as an alternative work arrangement.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve city policy number 200-1860 in support of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and city policy number 200-1870 in support of telecommuting, commuting as an alternative work arrangement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right. Motion passes. Okay. The next item is a resolution number 1168-0820 for 2020 residential paving. And City Engineer Ken Gill will fill in the details for us. Wait a minute. There he is.
Good evening, council, and thank you for letting me present to you guys tonight. I'm going to share my screen with you real quick. So what you should see in front of you is a map of the city and it shows, you'll see some blue and black dashes on there. That is where we're putting down two and a half inches of asphalt in East Mountain View. And you also show a little, some squiggly lines on there. It looks like what was on Charlie Brown's t-shirt. And that's where we're raising some iron up. So from last year, so in, in a perfect world, we would have that all raised up, but we were pretty short-staffed last year and are having our contractor take care of it this year. So Jay, I'm sure did an excellent job presenting this last week and I'm just going to write on his coattails and finish it up there and I'll let you guys open it up to any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions? In that case, we'll pause 30 seconds for public comment.
That's 30 seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
At this point, we're going to ask for a reading of resolution number 1168-0820.
Resolution number 1168-0820, a resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract with Agate Asphalt and Excavation for the completion of the 2020 residential paving project.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number 1168-0820. A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the contract with Agate Asphalt and Excavation for the 2020 residential paving project.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 1168-0820. A resolution authorizing city manager to sign the contract with Agate Asphalt and Excavation for the 2020 residential paving project. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on. We have another resolution for 2020 chip seal. You're up again.
Good evening again. So another asphalt project presented to you tonight. It's like double duty tonight. So again, I'm going to share my screen with you. And I'm going to flip to a different map. So same map, just different kind of asphalt. This is chip seal. So the line in blue, they're starting right in front of the hospital. We'll pick up where we left off last year.
We don't see the map again.
We're not seeing that there.
Okay, see the map. Okay. Let me share my screen. Okay, how about that?
There we go.
Okay, so same map, but different project. So if you focus in on where the hospital is, everybody knows where it's at on 13th. And if you drove through there today, it gets really rough and really smooth. And the reason is because that's And if you drove through there today, it gets really rough and really smooth. And the reason is because that's where we left off last year. So we're going to pick that up with that blocky blue line and end all the way at Wallace Nealon in Brockdale. So fingers crossed for nice warm weather because you need some nice hot weather to put down that chip seal, usually eighty-degree plus. So it's a little more temperature sensitive than two and a half inches of asphalt. So again, I'm sure Jay did a great job presenting this last week, and I don't have any more thing to present to you. But I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
And when are they supposed to start, Ken?
Agate Construction, I'm sorry, Agate Asphalt is going to start next, I'm looking at my calendar, next the Tuesday after Labor Day. And they've got a two or three-day job. So you might get a call from some of your constituents. Cobre gets all the, the good credit and kudos for together flyer today that'll be go out into residence. But you all see, also see our variable message boards up, out in that neighborhood. And then Doolittle, I've reached out to them tonight, but haven't made contact with them. So when I get a, get to talk to their gender manager, I can get back to you through Jeff on a start date and schedule.
And I'm assuming you're coordinating really well with the hospital to make sure that there's great access and whatnot. Because that's going to be a concern for our constituents to hear that plan.
Correct. So I've made friends with Brent Wilcox. He manages the construction activities going around at the hospital. Casper Fyson will reach out to them so that we're out there at the least incon- or the least inconvenient time for their operations.
And with the construction and just the projects that are going on there, there's not going to be any issues of us having to, you know, take the chip seal back out because of their projects, is there?
So let me rephrase your question, make sure I understand it. So because of the construction that's going on at the hospital.
Right.
And our project, well, they're being conflicted. And I don't think so. They just paved their lower lot that's right off of thirteenth. I mean, it looks like I ran by it today. It looks like a million bucks. So.
So it definitely is. I just want to make sure.
So to my knowledge, they don't have anything planned. And I think they've buttoned up their site for the year, but I will definitely reach out and make sure that you don't get any complaints or calls from people that want to use the hospital. And we're in the way with our dirty trucks that are spewing out gravel and tar.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll pause thirty seconds for public comment.
That's thirty seconds, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Donna. Would you give us a reading of resolution number one one six seven dash zero eight two zero?
I will. Resolution number one one six seven dash zero eight two zero. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, excuse me, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works contract with Doolittle Construction for the completion of the twenty-twenty chip seal project Schedule A.
All right, do we have a motion?
To adopt resolution number one one six seven dash zero eight two zero, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the contract with Doolittle Construction for the twenty-twenty chip seal project.
Okay, we have a motion. Oh, do you get a second?
Again.
Okay, here we go. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one one six seven dash zero eight two zero. Resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the contract with Doolittle Construction for the twenty-twenty chip seal project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on. Last action item is a resolution for the purchase and sale agreement for Simpson Properties. City Manager Jeff Knighton has the details for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and members of the public. Tonight, we are having the second reading for the purchase and sale agreement for properties owned by Simpson Lumber. They are, the vast majority of those properties run from immediately north of Nealon Park out to the intersection with one-on-one and Railroad. And there are several other properties along the north, just north of State Route Three, up on the hillside where the cleanup was conducted several weeks ago and looks fantastic. There was four tons of garbage hauled out of there. So I'm very happy to be able to do that or to facilitate that for the community. There are no changes from what you heard at our last meeting with the exception of a provision that allows a transfer of water rights, any water rights that are associated with the property along with this, this property transfer. And our liability, fiscal liability is approximately twelve hundred dollars to pay for the real estate excise tax. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just a comment, this is a great opportunity for us to have walking trails for people that come out of Nealon Park, and I'm really excited.
Yeah, we, we, this was part of a robust public involvement process several years ago. A lot of people put a lot of time and effort into that project. And we want to make sure that we honor the work that they did. There will be further public involvement processes, both with the council and the standalone as soon as we can figure out how to do that when none of us can get together.
Thank you.
All right, let's pause one more time for public comments.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you. Donna, would you give us a reading of resolution number one one six six dash zero eight two zero?
Resolution number one one six six dash zero eight two zero. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, ratifying the purchase and sale agreement with Simpson Lumber Company, LLC for conveyance of railroad, timber, and lumber properties.
Do we have a motion?
I move. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of this Shelton City Council Resolution number one one six six dash zero eight two zero and the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Simpson Lumber Company, LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize me to sign on behalf of the Shelton City Council. Somebody say something? I'm sorry.
I heard something.
Resolution number one one six six dash zero eight two zero and the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Simpson Lumber Company, LLC. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, let's move on to the city manager report by Mr. Jeff Knighton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I had planned to address this anyway, but we heard from the citizens tonight regarding the playground closures. Couple of things I want to stress, that the parks themselves are still open, so there is an opportunity for children and all the citizens of the city to exercise, get out in sunshine, and enjoy the sunshine. I know there are other jurisdictions that have left their playgrounds open. And, but we don't know necessarily what their circumstance are. We want to, every action we're taking from closing playgrounds to the softball fields to other actions we're taking in response to COVID is to do everything we can to make sure that the city businesses, city governmental institutions, city parks, schools in particular, can reopen as soon as possible. And some data, some good news that I heard last week is that three weeks ago, we were at a transmission rate. And when I say we, I mean the state of Washington. We were at a transmission rate of one point one-two, and I know all the citizens paying attention to the news know that the rate that we need to be at or below is one. And I can say that the information I got late last week was that because of our efforts and other communities around the state, our transmission level had dropped to point nine-seven. So we are going in the right direction. And that's good news. And that, again, just to stress, every action that we've taken is to ensure that things like schools and businesses and city homes, so that we can conduct business in person again, are to make sure that happens as soon as possible. That's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions on that topic or any others that you have tonight.
Anything from anybody?
I just have a comment, not relating to that, but are you ready for me then? Sorry. I just wanted to congratulate the Ridge Motorsports Park. They successfully completed, albeit not what was intended originally, the first inaugural Moto America here in sunny Shelton, Washington. From what I heard, it was quite, quite the awesome event. Unfortunately, you know, with COVID and everything, the spectator portion of it was considerably cut back, of course, but man, what an awesome thing that occurred in just, just right across the highway there. And looking forward to many, many more years of professional sporting events like that, bringing economic drivers to to the city of Shelton and to Mason County. And specifically, just want to congratulate Tracy Schmidt and her team at the Ridge, and I hope more, more wonderful things to come in the future with that partnership between the city and the Ridge. And yeah, it was just quite, quite an awesome thing to have some national attention brought to Shelton, Washington. I, I did catch a couple clips on TV when they're panning and around the Olympics and the track in the background, and it was quite cool to see our little town hit the map for something pretty big and pretty positive. So just wanted to share that tonight.
Very much so. I was jealous of the people that were able to attend and see it up close. And I did get a chance to watch it on TV, and it was fantastic. It looked great, and I can't wait for all of us to be able to go in person next year to enjoy that. Those are very exciting events. And we thank the Ridge for putting that on and hopefully support them any way we can.
All right.
Can I also, can I also say thanks?
Yeah. Yeah.
Also love to see our new oyster. Tell me his name. I can't remember it right now. My brain's a little foggy. So we have a new representative up on the hill in my neighborhood. We have our oyster harvester that is celebrating Oyster Fest, and it's just, it's, it's so heartwarming for me to see that every day. And so thanks for Rachel Hanson's continued work and just all of us coming together as city and Chamber and EDC and all, you know, all of our businesses that continue to support our efforts. And again, even though we're in COVID times, well, we're strong and prideful folks, and we're going to come through this, and it takes all of us to come together again and support each other. And I'm excited, even though these are hard times, I'm excited to see, you know, where this trail is going to take us, really. I mean, I'm not trying to just be philosophical there, but it's literal too. You know, this is something that I think we've all wanted to see for our community and, you know, I'm excited for our downtown as well. So thanks, everybody, for your hard work and for the citizens that are on and our, and our staff and stuff. Thanks again to all of you too. Appreciate, appreciate all of you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, our next meeting will be Tuesday, September fifteenth, twenty-twenty, at six o'clock. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-six.